All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to Thursday, October, no, Thursday, November 6, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So many flags. I know. Pledge of Allegiance. Introduction to Board Members. My far left is Gillian Richards, Rick Rains, myself, Michael LaRue, Vice Chair Nicole Fecto, Niles Shore. We also have Terry Wilson, Code Enforcement Officer, and James Bellisimo, Director of Planning and Development. All right. I'll open up the first public comment. This is for non-agenda items. Okay, seeing no one move, I will close that. Next is Approval of Minutes for October 2, 2025. I will be abstaining as I was not here.
Hopefully, we have a quorum. I move that we approve the minutes.
Oh, we do not, because Niles was not here. So we'll have to postpone the minutes. Okay. So we only have three. We need four. Okay. Next is Public Hearing. Minor subdivision creation of one lot off Pine Hill Road, R49-3, R25-13, R3, and LR Zone Putnam.
Good evening. My name is Neil Raposa. I'm with Civil Consultants. I'm here on behalf of the Putnam's. This project is the creation of one lot from an oversized lot, excuse me, on Pine Hill Road. It's going to utilize an existing driveway that will, that will serve the existing house that's there and the proposed lot. It's going to be upgraded slightly to town standards for a road serving, a driveway serving two dwellings. We've reviewed it with the fire chief and everyone has been comfortable with the, the road that we've proposed to put in there, which is basically a slightly wider driveway than normal with the, with the typical subbase gravel for a regular town road. The, the reason it's coming before the planning board is in the past, it was part of a subdivision that was, that was pulled back and then there were two lots split off front that the town said they had to come in and, and call it a minor subdivision. Otherwise, this would be basically a lot division that wouldn't really be in front of the planning board. But for that reason, there's a condition on that, that, that historical subdivision that was in, it said it had to come into the planning board to be reviewed if any other lots were split off of this larger lot. So that's, that's the basic, uh, basic gist of it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone like to come up and make their comments or questions? Just come forward and then state your name and your address.
Good evening. Ronald Long. I think he might have just answered my question because back 37, 40 years ago, there was a gentleman that owned that property and whatever happened. So even though my address is 423 Pine Hope Road, that is actually my frontage and it's the frontage for the next lot over. And I just wanted to make sure somebody knew that. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one else move forwards, I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Next, Old Business Minor Subdivision Creation of One Lot Off Pine Hill Road, R49-3, R25-13, R3, and LR Zone Putnam.
Well, again, yep, so it's, has not changed since the last time it was before the board. The, the waivers that were requested and approved still apply for, for what we're proposing for this lot split. But beyond that, have you answered any questions that have come up or listen to what the pleasure of the board is?
Mr. Long said that he just had that question about frontage, but you seem that you already answered that.
Right. Yes, that was, that was one of the, one of the items on that previous subdivision where it said that, that first 350 feet of this driveway, which is, let's see if I can use this guy. Blindness kicking me. I can't see it.
You can.
So this portion here between these two lots, this 350 feet needs to be accessible to both of these lots.
That creates the frontage.
Right. It can't be blocked off.
Correct.
It doesn't necessarily need to be brought up to town standards as it's not the access point, but it cannot, it has to be accessible to both of these lots for, as long as, as long as this right away isn't, isn't in existence.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments?
No. No conditions?
Yeah, no conditions.
Findings of fact?
Yep.
I move that we approve the findings of fact for the Putnam application.
Okay. Second. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I move that we approve the... Yeah, the minor, it's a minor subdivision because it's a creation of one lot. The minor subdivision off Pine Hill Road.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Neil. All right, moving along. New Business Major Subdivision, 17 lots off School Street and Heritage Drive, R25-13, R2 Zone SOW Solar Incorporated.
Okay. Thank you. For the record, Mike Sudak, ATOR Engineering, here on behalf of SOW Solar. Looks like you got the plans in front of you.
Thank you.
So actually, yeah, so this application was last in front of you guys in summer. We had our sketch review. We were granted the right to pursue a cluster development. We had a site walk, I believe, in May, April and May. And since then, we're on to preliminary design. I'm gonna flip the board over in a second, but I just wanted to show you what's in front of you, was what was approved last year. This was for Phase 1. Terry, I'm really sorry if I get you. So what's in yellow here, these are the six frontage lots on Heritage Drive that were previously approved. And then the green you see opposite on the Malloy Brook Water Course, that was the open space that was approved with it. So that was about 10 acres of development. On Heritage Drive, consumed most of the frontage and left the remaining balance, which is what we're here for tonight. All right. And just flip the board over. So what you have in front of you now in blue is the proposed remainder of the development. It's a trap, travelway about half a mile long, about 26, 2700 feet collector standards and servicing 17 clustered lots. All of them will have their access from the new travelway. There's one that kind of consumes the remainder of our double frontage along School Street. So they get their frontage from School Street, but their access will come from the new road. That's a cluster standard, so we have to hit that. See what else. We have, if you remember from the first phase, we had a revision for the site location development for Heritage Estates for those driveway culverts. This entrance will have to similarly have another revision for that processed. And then the development itself, because of size and scale, will need, need its own site location and development permit for stormwater onsite quality and quantity. So that's going to be quite the lead time. And then we'll need NERPA PBR for the significant vernal pool onsite. We're preserving about 80% of that critical terrestrial habitat, but the travelway just has to go through that 250-foot radius. There's really no way around it unless it's going into the brook, which it's not. So that's, that's our other permit. And then the big one, and what's delayed us coming back here, is we applied to attempt to utilize the School Street frontage with DOT, and they denied it. And then we applied for reconsideration, and then they denied that. And then we appealed that decision, and they denied that. So I, then all of that's at the very end of your packet. My correspondence with Mr. Sharma, the Commissioner for this region sucks, frankly, but we exhausted about as much as we could. So we have to come in from the remaining frontage, which, yeah, it's going to be a complicated little stretch. We cut across the meadow there. There's more wetland impacts than I would like, but we're keeping them as minimal as we can. Yeah, I think I've labored on enough. We have a couple waivers for contemplation. One of them's plan scale, same as the last one. And then the other one has to do with a travelway. James has some, some comments on that in your packet. We can get into that as you guys would like. But besides that, I'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Your turn. I have a bunch of questions. So one of the waivers is regarding the slope of the road coming, it's the first portion coming in, 135 feet, right, is going to be...
Yeah. So collector standards, you have a max slope of 6%?
Yep.
Our first plan and profile sheet shows it best. I think that's Sheet 5, if you have the whole set there in front of you.
This is Sheet 1?
Yes.
Oh, Sheet 5. You want us to look at?
Yeah, that just shows it the best.
Uh, okay.
We're, um, we're exceeding that 6% for a span of 133 feet.
Right.
Really, it's just matching the grade as best we can. I could, I could elevate the roadway, but that would just mean my side slopes get feathered further out. I get more wetland impacts, and I really don't want to do that if I don't have to. So I reached out to James, asked if this is something that could be waived. He said yes, provided all the other performance standards are met. So...
Well, I have a lot of questions about that.
Sure.
Because I want to know, and I appreciate that explanation, I want to know from James why we have that slope. I mean, there's, there's obviously a reason for it, whether it be stormwater runoff or safety.
Yeah, some of my...
Infrastructure drainage, like there's...
Yeah, drainage or like ice.
Yeah, there's a lot of reasons to have that. So, so, you know, is it, if there's, if it creates limited visibility, we're in a neighborhood where people are walking dogs and kids are riding bikes, that's going to, you know, is that going to limit reaction time of drivers? That's what I'm concerned about.
Part of the reason why, I think it would maybe be prudent for the board to hold off on granting the waiver and give us a little time for a third-party review.
Okay. So a third party would review.
We'll do a cursory third-party review of the general application, but that could be one of the, you know, focuses.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So there's one. And my, an additional question on that was the, the Filterra internal bypass curb schematics were included. Would that be, would, would that change any of that if we're having more, more of a slope to that road?
No. So that section of the road, basically until that first left-hand corner, that curve has to be super elevated anyway, just because of your dimensional standards. So we're going to have that entire section from Heritage Drive to the point of tangency, so the end of that curve.
Yep.
Be super elevated pitching towards School Street. And then we're going to have that entire section be curbed and have a curb inlet at effectively each wetland crossing. That's where the biofiltration, biofiltration vault's going to be.
Okay.
Yeah. There, I've already got the designs for them with the relief, assuming the waiver's granted. And if it isn't, then it just comes up and it's even more manageable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will we have sidewalks in this neighborhood? This is an R2. I'm just thinking of like Halflinger neighborhood, for instance, where that's also in the R2 zone. I know that's more in the growth zone, and I don't know if this is considered growth. I know it's transitional. But will there be sidewalks? Because this is a neighborhood where, I mean, I've sold houses in here. There's an, it's a neighborhood where people are out walking their dogs and walking, and it's a very walkable, it's a very nice little community. It's beautiful land. And so that was a question of mine. I don't see them anywhere.
So it's an R2, so R2, R2 is a growth zone?
Okay.
It does say shall, so the board can waive the requirements, but that's something you would have to waive.
Okay.
If, if, if the board decided separate were needed. But as of now, it's a shall.
Okay. So if the board wanted those, would we put them in there as a condition then? Would that be a condition or...
A condition of like application completeness?
No, no, approval. No, I'm just, I'm talking in the future, future. I'm not talking, I just want some questions. I know we're just going for application completeness.
It could be, it could be a condition of like preliminary approval.
Okay, yeah.
Or we could just simply reject it for not doing it right.
That's true. Yeah.
That would be the easy way to do it.
Thank you, Niles. Okay. So will we require the, because this is phased and, and you can only sell three lots, you can only sell three houses in this development a year according to our growth structure. Will we require the road to be complete before they're allowed to sell the lots? That's a big concern because we have recently had a subdivision gone bad where things were not completed, and I don't want to see that again.
I think the applicant could propose phasing, including phasing of the road. That would have to be approved in a detailed plan by the planning board and appropriate escrows raised along with final approval.
Mm-hmm.
So if the road wasn't built, then we would expect...
Surety was my, was my next question.
The phasing plan that would be approved by the board as well as the escrow costs approved by the board and in hand before final approval.
Okay.
I can add on to that if you'd like.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair. Yes, James and I discussed that when I dropped this off last month, agree with everything he said. And his statement to me was that that's something that you guys would like to see for final. If it's something you'd like to see before then, I can do my best. We do have to, unfortunately, just because of the amount of infrastructure to get behind the Phase 1 lots, we gotta build quite a bit just to get to those first three frontages. So it would be discussion with the fire chief, seeing if he's agreeable to some type of hammerhead three-point at the, basically at the end of that first left-hand curve to get some, some income coming, coming back into the development and fund the future phases. But yeah, it's going to be probably three or four of those, because it's a lot, it's a lot of road. And yeah, I can figure out how much would make sense to construct first as part of getting access to those first few frontages. I'm guessing it would be right before that vernal pool, because we don't want to impact that habitat any more than we need to. But yeah.
Streetlights? Other streetlights?
We are not proposing any.
Okay. I've just, I didn't see any. I just want to confirm that. Open space, who's going to retain ownership? I know that there was some already, but I wasn't here when that last phase, the first phase was approved. So who will retain it and what will it be used for?
That's another one James and I discussed.
Okay.
I would like to have the opportunity to present that with finality at final, because there's some, some town-owned land that's pretty close to here. It wouldn't be direct connectivity, but if we can have that succession worked out as part of our final application, otherwise I'll have an answer if it isn't that for all of the...
Yeah. I don't expect to have answers for all of it. It's just that it's good to have everything during application completeness rather than get all the way to final. This is just a, I was reading all of those letters. I read through your whole packet. The Soil Scientist report mentions that this is a mixed-use development, and I'm going to guess that that was just a, just a my bad on his part?
I think the original soil narrative was prepared when this was contemplated as a solar development.
Okay. A few of these items were, and I was like, are they, because some of them were contemplated, I think it's the IFNW maybe, but when this was in front of them as a solar farm in like 2021, do the, do the standards change? Like are there, do they need to see this again? Do they need more information since it's going to be a subdivision out of solar farms, so the impact is considerably more significant?
I'm fairly certain for both IFNW and the Natural Areas Program, I requested just whether or not their original comments held.
Okay.
I know from Ms. St. Hilaire, I know I was, the response from MNAP is in there.
Yes.
So if the IFNW one isn't, I believe we received it, so I'll make, I'll make sure we get that to you.
What is an NRPA PBR from the DEP?
Yes.
So it says, it says in that letter from DEP, it says the vernal pool is significant. It is mentioned in the letter from, oh, this might be my notes. It's mentioned in the letter from the Bureau of Land Resources that if the vernal pool crosses two or more property boundaries, and it, it appears to me that it crosses nine, the abutters who are similarly, the abutters are similarly subject to the requirements of the National Resources Protection Act and the Significant Wildlife Habitat rules.
Yep.
So does that mean all of the abutters around or just the abutters of the vernal pool? Define a butters for me.
All right. If I get two in the weeds here, give me the hook. So that dark, well, I'm gonna point it out here. Oh, there we go. That dark hat right there. Yeah. So that's the significant vernal pool.
Yes.
And from that, there's a 250-foot offset that's called the Critical Terrestrial Habitat. And from that, there's a 250-foot offset that's called the Critical Terrestrial Habitat.
Yeah.
And a NRPA PBR, so a permit by rule through the Natural Resource Protection Act. I know I'm.
No, that's what I was reading and I didn't know what it was and I figured I would just wait for you to tell me.
Yeah, so there's a, it's called a Section 19 PBR for activities adjacent to a significant vernal pool.
Okay.
Any disturbance that is within that 250-foot setback.
Yeah.
You have to apply for a permit for and you have to prove that you're preserving at least 75% of that onsite area.
Okay.
So there's a calculation for that that's on the first sheet. We're preserving about 80%.
Okay.
So you do the math backwards, our travelway is about 20%. And that includes where it being as conservative as possible, assuming that every single square inch of the entire travelway and every single square inch of the front yards of the lots that are within that radius is impacted.
Okay.
That won't end up being what it's going to be, but for the sake of the calculation being as thorough as it can be.
And it impacts the person that already lives at 23 Heritage? Because it's the back corner of his lot also?
So the way, the, well, I'll answer that in two parts. We had a NRPA PBR for the first phase and we proposed, because the first three frontage lots, or I guess the northern three frontage lots, all lie within that 250 as well. And we had deed restrictions to have no cut, notice, or buffers for the entire rear yard. So there was 0% contributed from that, that phase. The way the state views the Critical Terrestrial Habitat for a completely off-site vernal pool is that it's exempt. So when you talked about that, I think you said 23.
23, it's just the back corner of his lot, that existing home.
Because the vernal pool itself isn't on their property, it doesn't generate a CTH for the purposes of that permit.
Okay, that was one of, yeah. The IFW letter, so that one was in there. It says, "If surveys for vernal pools have not been conducted on the remainder of the property, we recommend that surveys for vernal pools be conducted within the project boundary by qualified wetland scientists prior to final project design to determine whether there are, I guess, other significant vernal pools in the area." Has that been done?
Yes.
Okay. MNAP recommended in 2021 that you survey the project area for spreading sedge during the growing season of between May 15th and July 15th. Because they say that it appears there may be suitable habitat for this species. Has this been done?
It has not.
In all those years, those four years, okay, are you going to do it?
We can, so spreading sedge is typically a wetland species and I believe the previous development wasn't contemplating any wetland impacts when it was a solar development. We are, so the process for that would be, it's called a host plant survey. We would contract it out, folks like StanTech do something like that. We've done it before in town for, oh, Spice Bush, I believe.
I remember that, Norman Court, yeah.
Yeah, so that is something that we can do, absolutely.
Between May 15th and July 15th?
Yep, which when we, our stormwater permits are going to take us there anyway.
Perfect. The letter from the Bureau of Agriculture, Food, and Rural Resources identified prime farmland soil. And that was in relation to when you were going in front of them for the solar farm, not a subdivision. So that's a little concerning because they're like, yes, this is prime, this is the best farmland soil you can get. Put your solar farm there, but now we're putting a subdivision. Do you like, do you plan on giving them another letter saying, hey? I just don't know how that goes. They got a letter to begin with, the Bureau of Agriculture, Food, and Rural Resources. Do you reach back out to them and just say, it's going to be a subdivision now? Or is it just?
Yeah, so that's what I mentioned earlier, specifically for MNAP because that Department of Agriculture is included.
Okay, they're in MNAP.
Yeah, they're one of the subdivisions beneath it, or subsidiaries beneath it. Words. All of their comments still hold for this land use.
Okay.
And yeah, all of the, I think there's a, there's a figure that's included as well. All the prime farmland is the old fields up front, so yeah.
No, of course, yeah.
Yep.
That was it, I've just, the other thing I had in there was about surety. And I did read through all of those emails between you and the highway.
Tried to be.
And I'm sorry for the, for what you've gone through with that also because it's like, reading those emails was pretty eye-opening and I hope the rest of the board reads it as well.
It left a pretty, I don't want to put anyone, it left a pretty bad taste in my mouth at the end of it because the, the way that they apply their policies, the effective date is 2002, spring of 2002. And at that time, this parcel didn't qualify for the dual frontage provision because Heritage Drive wasn't a public road yet, it wasn't turned over to 2007. And they seem to agree with me on that, but still.
Yeah, but they still denied it, rejected it, and yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't feel great.
Sorry about that.
No, it just would have, it would have made so much more sense for literally everyone involved. For all the people that are here tonight in the audience, it would have made it way more sense. So yeah, it's a shame, but thank you for saying that.
Can I ask one question?
Sure can.
Did you come up with an alternative for accessing lot 17?
Yeah, so it's going to be, like I said earlier, its frontage is going to be granted from School Street, but we're effectively just going to have a, an egress easement that cuts through lot one and reaches 17.
Like a right-of-way?
Yeah. Just kind of an awkward area, really not much else I can do with it.
It's a lot of money to create just 17 lots. Niles?
Yeah, first one is easy. Question three, is applicant a corporation? You say no, explain.
I said no.
You did.
Oh yeah, it is number three.
And I'll explain the reason I bring it up.
Sure.
I worry if on page one of an application, there has not been sufficient proofreading to catch something so obvious. And that makes me wonder, how many other mistakes are there in here?
It's a fair question.
You got a good answer?
I don't.
Well, there we go. My next two questions are, as I understand, you're seeking application completeness tonight? Or is that not correct?
That would be the goal, yes, sir.
If there are two, what I consider to be very important questions, that your answer is to be determined. One of them is about the open land and how you'll approach it. And the other one is even more troublesome, which is fire safety. I'm not sure how it is that you can be asking us to rule on completeness if you don't have a proposal on fire safety for a lot with, for a subdivision with 17 lots, roughly 50 to 70 people. I don't see how in good conscience we can be asked to do that.
Well, I suppose that depends on whether or not you've considered us to satisfy the preliminary subdivision requirements. Your town planner has advised that the items you just mentioned can be acceptable to be provided in greater detail for final. If that's not your opinion, then that's not your opinion. My request remains the same, but I appreciate the concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So for the waivers, for the street design guidelines, we would like to have a third-party review of that.
Yeah.
For the slope. Should we act on the plan scale now? Or should we just deal with that both at the same time?
I think it, I think it would make sense to act on the plan waiver for the scale.
Yeah, if we get application complete. Don't put the cart in front of the horse.
Okay.
So I will move that we find the application for Malloy Brook Phase Two off Heritage Drive Complete.
I'll second. Further discussion? All in favor?
We need, well, hold on, there is discussion. We need completeness to submit it to a third-party. I mean, you can't submit something that is not essentially an application to an engine.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, we could, that's, I don't think that's a prerequisite.
Okay, I just wouldn't want the town to spend money engaging in our third-party or peer review. And then maybe the applicant decide that this is not cost-effective to create 17 lots in Berwick for this price.
If I may.
Yeah.
Just as, if we're talking about completeness, and now we brought up two points. The first part being fire safety. So this is under the, this site will not be built. So we're talking about turnarounds in the context of fire safety, I believe, when it comes to.
I was more concerned about water.
Oh.
There's a question, you know, what are you going to do, do fire hydrants, dry hydrants? And the answer is TBD. I don't find that comfortable.
Okay, that's a good point. Do you have, I guess, I'll go back to Mike.
You're going back to me?
Well, we can vote.
Oh, this Mike?
Yeah.
What was the other one?
The open land, but what, how are they going to approach the open land? Since it's a cluster development where the essence is open land, I'm a little troubled that the answer is to be determined.
Well, that's just dependent on if the town will adopt it or not, is that correct?
That is one of the options that's available to us, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that very answer, one of the options, which means there might be other options.
Yeah, I mean, either way.
So if we voted this is complete, what are we voting on as regard to the open land?
Just please leave your comments to yourself. It's just hard to, it's distracting. But I, I understand that. I just lost my train of thought.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Open space typically be something that, so what you're voting, subdivision's a pretty long, long road.
Yeah.
Your sketch, we're here at finding the preliminary plan complete. So if it's found complete, then we'll meet again in a month to do the public hearing.
Yeah.
And then if, at that point, everything's satisfied, you could vote to approve the preliminary plan. Or if things are still up in the air, you could not vote, you could say, you got to come back for preliminary plan approval.
You know, I understand, but an answer to be determined makes it sound incomplete to me.
Sure.
Right, because that's not an answer.
Can I get clarification on one thing? Did you meet with, Chief Plant has seen the plan, is that correct? You did run everything past him?
We, yes. Chief Plant has been, has seen the plan and then I believe police was sent the plan and their previous comments, because they provided them the last go-around and they were satisfied with that as well. That was included in the sketch, though, the trapaway.
What did you tell the fire chief about water and fire safety?
He didn't. It says, "The subject parcel is 57 acres." That's one thing, I keep seeing different numbers. I keep seeing 69.94 and 57. "Is located in the transitional zone and is dual frontage on both Heritage Drive and Route 9. The applicant proposes to develop the remainder of the property as a 17-lot residential subdivision of clustered lots, all which shall front on a proposed travelway extending from Heritage Drive and constructed to Town Collector Standards. All lots shall be serviced by, shall be serviced by private individual drilled wells and private individual subsurface water, wastewater systems. And the planning board shall be requesting this department to comment on the adequacy of the existing capital facilities to support the proposed development as per the town subdivision regulations."
Mind re-stating your question, sir?
Oh, so whatever the fire chief said, he doesn't know anymore about what you intend to do with water for fire safety than the rest of us do?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any more further discussion?
Is it 57 or 69.94 acres?
The original parcel, since, this is before you now, is Phase Two.
Yeah.
So for the purposes of density and everything else. The entire parcel before Phase One, the entire balance of land is about 68, 69 acres.
Okay.
And then 10 of that was subdivided into the six frontage lots, leaving the 57 for the rest of the calculations.
That makes me feel better because I knew I was seeing it throughout.
Not trying to.
No, no, I knew there was a reason, I just didn't know what the reason was yet.
I have a question. I think that the points brought up about incomplete are valid. But I also try to look at a bigger picture where there are other stops down the road that we have to get through for this project to be approved. And at what point is an application, which isn't an approval, completed enough to pass in to then figure everything else out after? In other words, we have the public hearing coming up if this gets approved, where questions will be brought up and anything that we find or is determined needs further investigation will then have to be all taken care of before we get to final. So I guess what I'm leaning towards as a board member is to find an application that may not have every single T crossed or I dotted, but is to be determined before final approval. In my mind, it's still good to go forward instead of asking the applicant to wait longer to just fix a typo and get the other information that is going to be found out anyway, I guess is my opinion.
It doesn't need to be unanimous vote, everybody can vote how they feel.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it was, you know, signage or something like that, I'm fine. It's fire safety. You know, it's having water for fire safety makes me a little nervous and I would like that to be thought through. And I'm fine that it may change, I accept that. But we've got nothing now. There's no answer to be determined.
There's, there's no.
It seems to me sort of the essence of incomplete is the phrase, "to be determined."
I guess I look at it as, technically, you're correct. It is not 100% accurate and complete. But I also think it's an application and not an approval. So it's going to get all of those approvals before we sign off on the final plan. At what point do we want to stop the process to get what's going to be determined anyway later?
I think we should just vote.
Yep. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, all against?
It's complete. We got a quorum.
I had the date in mind, I think the first Thursday in December.
For the public hearing?
Public hearing, yeah. I always get the dates wrong when I go off the top of my head, so.
I'm looking.
I believe it's the fourth.
Fourth, December 4th. Okay.
Is that something that needs to be moved? Okay?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, no.
Okay.
No, you're complete, so you're good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving along.
And thank you folks for coming and listening.
Second public comment is now open. All right, seeing no one move forward, I will close the second public comment. Next is informational items.
Indoor winter pickleball coming to Berwick soon.
The Board of Appeals would like to have a workshop with the planning board. Board of Appeals has had several appeals regarding around access to lots, Section 7.21. Board of Appeals has had several appeals regarding around access to lots, Section 7.21. Section 7.21 has been confounding to the Burwick community for the entire time I've been employed with the town for nine, gone nine years. We rewrote it once, and it seemed to have been an improvement, but based on the appeals, we have more work to do. 7.21 access to lots is the road standards, so anything more than two requires construction. So there's, there's lots of nuance and lots of, I think the appeals board just wants to get together, and they have some ideas, and they just, they figured instead of proposing to you ideas, just coming up with ideas together, that way it's just kind of a strong...
Yeah, yeah. Cool.
Do they have an idea of like when they wanted to have that workshop?
I'll probably just have to send out an email to everybody, maybe just do a kind of informal poll, and we'll do the best we can.
That's good.
Get you some joint meeting, whether that's after a planning board meeting or scheduled appeals meeting.
Mondays work best for me.
Okay.
But not for me. Well, you know...
Depending on what Monday is, we should say that.
Also, just another point about major legislative changes, LD 2003 and LD 1829. It's 1829, and I recommend people do some research into those. They're going to change our ordinances quite a bit. I think the town can be well-positioned to make the best out of it, but there are some things coming with density and ADUs. Triplexes and quadplexes will no longer go to the planning board. They're not allowed to, they're no longer considered subdivisions. There's a bunch of things coming.
Do you have those bills?
I can send them out.
That would be good.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Good. Any more informational items?
Oh, another thing. Part of that law, there actually was another law, where it mandates planning board trainings within the first six months of being appointed.
Cool.
So it's something we'll have to put in our ordinance and our bylaws.
That's good, that's a good thing.
What kind of training?
MMA has...
They have another one coming up in December, the first week in December. They just had one last week that I attended, but I got an email this morning, actually, that they're having another one.
They do them in-person, they do them Zoom. Want to share some of the takeaways?
It was slightly informative, a lot of the stuff I knew just because of my job. So it was, got a little boring for me, but I think if you don't have the municipal experience and the, as your background, it would be super informative. Yeah.
Stuff like public meetings, right?
Yeah, like rules, like not be, like, if we three show up at the grocery store, we can't discuss something, that sort of, they went over that kind of thing.
Don't referral an email.
Exactly. Don't have a group chat, that sort of thing.
Yes.
Yeah, it all creates public information.
Yep.
Which are, we had a meeting like that with the town attorney, what, last year?
Yeah.
So...
Every once in a while, we'll pull together workshops, whether it's with SNPDC.
Yeah.
York County has a new training center, so there could be some opportunities closer by.
Cool.
Yes.
Then I guess we'll be inserting LUO changes and reviews soon also.
Move to rebrand, cluster development.
You're on the road to June 2026 amendments.
Which that means anyone from the public, if they have any questions or concerns about land use ordinance updates.
Yeah, they'll come after, they'll come after.
Please refer them all to James so that in our public meetings, we can talk about them. All right. Is that it for informational items?
That's it.
Okay. Next is your turn.
Pickleball, Kim?
I don't know yet, but I'll, trust me, I will be telling everybody about it, but it'll be soon, and it'll be upstairs in the auditorium. We'll have two courts, and it'll be all winter long. And you can see me for more information in two weeks.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Let's do it. Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, good night.